Alrighty, good evening. Welcome to our January 3rd meeting of the Northborough School Committee. Uh, we have um one um virtual attendance by a committee member. And we have um a principal and assistant superintendent also virtual tonight. And so we are a full hybrid meeting, so it's exciting. Um, thank you for joining us for the first meeting of 2024. Uh, do we have any audience sharing? Nope, alright, we're moving on. Uh, we have new business tonight. We are um would like to meet the Director of the Multilingual Learners of Equity in Equity, is that it? I feel like it used to be, I feel like it used, Rota used to have like a long, long title, like, you know, are we shortening it?
So this evening, I'm pleased to um formally introduce Selvi Ola as the Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity. Um, Selvi has been an educator in our districts. She's worked in Southborough and at the Regional High School as an ELD teacher um for several years. Uh, she is considered a leader in her department and work, has worked very closely with Rota. Um, she's well-respected in our district and also brings um to the work an engineering background in project management. So um I think the interview committee was very impressed with her ability to project plan, uh, to think forward, to manage multiple projects at once, because working in our district is a lot of project management. Um, so all of those skills that she learned as an engineer really apply. She's an active member of the Northborough community, um, and we couldn't be thrilled um to have her as the next director. Over the next um several months, she'll be working closely with Rota. So Rota will be um working with her on the transition. And part of our work is making sure we have smooth transitions when we lose an excellent leader, to make sure that that excellent leader um position is filled with the next excellent leader, so we're very excited. Um, Selvi has Rota's full endorsement and was thrilled that Selvi um was offered the position and will be the next um predecessor to the, to the role. So, Selvi, I don't know if you want to say a few words?
Absolutely, it's my honor and pleasure to be serving in this role and capacity and to be able to work with all of you closely and especially to learn more about leadership and what our district does in terms of supporting all learners at our schools. I'm really excited, I have big shoes, big shoes to fill, but I'm looking forward to it.
Um, I just want to make a note, it was 6:33 when I opened the meeting. I never officially did that or said the time, I'm just realizing that, so I apologize for our minute taker. We'll have to say that at the end, if that's what I did, but um, does anybody have any questions or?
Oh, wel- welcome. And uh, well, welcome to the new transition, you've been with us for a bit, so yeah, we're excited, I think. Um, if Rota and Greg give you a vote of confidence, that's all I need, so, excited.
Um, I, I feel like when we all heard that Rota was retiring, I think our first reaction was panic. Um, and and having been through uh the interview process and um getting to know you more, Selvi, I, I can sleep easy, knowing that um you are filling Rota's shoes and that you'll be working with her for the next several months. Uh, so, welcome to this new leadership role and we're really excited to have you in this role.
Thank you so much, I don't know if her shoes aren't fillable, but I'm
So Joan does have a question.
Yep, Joan?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Selvi, I'd like to welcome you to the district, you've been here already. Uh, but it's one of the chairs who is involved in one of the final, um, not the interview, but just to meet you. I was very impressed about your trajectory coming into Northborough. When you moved into here, how you became involved with the PTOs. Um, you were a member of the school council and also as a substitute teacher. So I think besides your educational background, you really immersed yourself into our school districts to get to know the um, how we operate. And um, just as Lauren said, I'm looking forward very much to the great things that are going to happen and I know that we're in capable hands with you as the leader, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Joan.
Thanks, Joan.
Yeah, I'd just offer my congratulations as well on your new role. I'm excited to see um you in this role, that's great.
Thank you.
So the, the next step is we're um working to fill her current position at Algonquin Regional High School. So Selvi was very concerned about not um leaving the students that she worked closely with. So until we hire that person, um, we won't begin the transition. I believe we have interviews next week, um, so interviewing candidates and hopefully that goes really well. And then we can start transitioning Selvi in, into um her new role. So, welcome.
It's my honor and pleasure and I'm looking forward to this opportunity.
Thank you. Principal reports by Dr. Colley.
Okay, um, Happy New Year, everyone. I'm glad to be here tonight to represent the principals. Uh, I'll start with the Z School. The Z students have been learning about a growth mindset during the morning meetings as part of the second step curriculum. On the 18th, the students engaged in a collaborative cup stacking activity with their zebra families. And then at our community meeting, we read the book, "The Power of Yet" by Mary Ann Coca-Lefter. On the 22nd, we had an all-school holiday sing-along that featured songs about Kwanzaa, Diwali, Christmas, and Hanukkah. One student performed a song in French and another shared a song about how their family celebrates Diwali. It was a wonderful celebration of the diversity of our community and a great way to close our last day of school before the break. A huge thank you to Mr. Arnold for his time in organizing this event. Registration for incoming kindergarten students will begin for all of the Northborough Elementary Schools on January 15. We are looking forward to the, meeting this new group of students. Information can be found on our district and school websites. The first term will be coming to a close soon and report cards will be shared with families on January 28. Students will also be completing mid-year testing in math and reading. This information will be used by the teachers in data meetings to adjust small groups and to inform instruction for this next part of the school year. At the Proctor School, the scholars have shown tremendous enthusiasm and engagement in their learning experiences throughout December. In our ongoing efforts to help students apply their knowledge in different areas and their everyday lives, Mrs. Furry's third grade class is exploring the world of coding by using Scratch. Similarly, similarly, Mrs. Hennington and Ms. McCabe's first graders have an interactive introduction to coding with Ozobots, making learning exciting and accessible for all, for all learners. Mrs. Broschew's first grade class was very determined to progress with their ST math usage. They met a milestone by setting and achieving 100% puzzle completion in ST math before the December break. This accomplishment reflects their dedication as a class and the support from their peers in order to reach their collective goal. Some fifth grade members of Proctor's Spirit Committee worked with our Castle students to organize a winter gear clothing drive. The students collected winter clear, winter gear to be donated to Cradles and Crayons. Thanks to our very own Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Bailey for helping to organize this drive. To wrap up before the holiday, our entire school gathered for a fun-filled all-school sing-along, complemented by engaging games. It was a delightful event, providing our learning community with a nice send-off before the break. A special thanks to Mrs. Burns for orchestrating this wonderful occasion. The highlight of our December at the Peaslee School was our school spirit and cozy pajama day on the 22nd. These exciting spirit days, which happen all year long at Peaslee, are always paired with a non-perishable food collection benefiting the Northborough food pantry. Fifth grade student leaders advertise, sort, and deliver these items. We also held our December all-school meeting. In the spirit of the season, we shared the ways we celebrate during this festive time of year. Building on the unifying theme of light, we noted the commonalities amongst the holidays we celebrate and those celebrated by our others in our community. Other highlights of the meeting including announcing birthdays for the month, handing out awards, hearing a read aloud, and listening to our fourth graders perform a, a winter concert. Looking forward to this month, we are very excited about our yearly PTO-sponsored Winter Fest on Friday, January 12. The Fun-Fill Winter themed social will include games, activities, arts and crafts for students and their families to enjoy. Additionally, our fifth grade chorus and band winter concert will be held on January 18th at 7:00 PM in the Peaslee School cafeteria. Students and teachers have been working very hard to prepare this wonderful event. A special thank you goes to our music staff for their exceptional work this year. Lastly, the students have begun the bullying curriculum, which is part of our newly adopted second step curriculum. Teachers are excited about the new program and have had many positive things to say about it, the materials and how the students are interacting with it during the lessons. We also handed out the first Golden Gigi Award, which was presented to the class this week who met their highest puzzle completion goal. Let the games begin. At Lincoln Street, the, the LSS Polar Bear engaged in a wonderful and exciting activity in December. Some highlights included handmade snow people, assembling STEM vehicles, designing and delivering cars to the Whitney Place, and participating in an all-school pajama day on the 21st. We did postpone our slime and sing-along assembly for a date to be determined in January. Our students completed Module 1 of the Witten Wisdom Curriculum across the district. All grades completed their end-of-module tasks before the break. Students have developed critical listening, reading, speaking, and writing skills over these past few months. At Lincoln Street, we celebrated our ST math accomplishments to close out December by highlighting and honoring students who have achieved over 90% of their journey. It is amazing what a simple sticker and pencil, pencil can do for a reward. At Melican, the week before vacation was Spirit Week and the week ending with Bus Driver Appreciation. We want to thank our PTO for the wonderful staff appreciation, appreciation luncheon they provided on the 22nd. We are all thrilled to be back from winter break, students are happy to be with their friends in learning. We want to thank Bud Richardson and the Custodians for their work over the holiday. Implementation of the Carnegie Math Program is going well. Our math teachers continue to work closely with Trotter and Carnegie's support staff to ensure equitable and effective implementation. Students are meeting the high Carnegie standards and are adjusting to the new ways of learning math and talking about math. Wachusett Ski Club begins next Tuesday, January 9th. A popular club, it runs every Tuesday until vacation. We are hoping for some snow before Tuesday, sounds like we might get it. We had a math meeting on January 11th and our basketball season is in full swing with two games per week. Central District auditions for our musicians take place on February 3rd and Jazz Day and Night is scheduled for February 14th. And that concludes the principal's report.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Um, does anybody have any questions about it? Sounds like it's been a, had a great December and I think everyone's getting ready for January and can't wait to see what's going to happen. Alright. Uh, next we have uh, right, yeah, Dr. Reinhardt's going to be doing the MCAS presentation. Okay. See, the only thing I don't like about the memo is that it comes out, so I go looking out here, I'm like, no, wait, I gotta look in here. Big set, let me know. No, 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 it's fine, no, it's fine, yeah. I like, because I like the memo, I usually point out like one other thing, so I can just have it as well.
Okay, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present and um our sort of annual presentation of the MCAS data. Um, it is, in terms of the big picture context, uh, the accountability system is um both federally and state mandated and um is serves to provide feedback to families, to schools, to, at the level of um school, district, state on performance and for us to be able to act on that data. It's an important system and has played a significant role in terms of um, particularly in terms of issues of equity. It's also important for us internally to remember that MCAS is one of many sources of data and that our North Star is really our vision and our profile of a graduate. Um, the testing is one piece of information that informs that work, um, but it is not our end goal. It is um, you know, sort of part of the whole context. Just as a few reminders, um, MCAS was canceled in 2020. It was modified in 2021 and then last year in 20, well, the year before in 2022, um, was back to sort of a typical administration. So then 2023, we again had a typical administration. Our participation rates were high at 99% in all three subject areas that are tested at the elementary and middle school level. Um, and really that means for the purposes of this presentation, I'm going to really focus on the 22 and 23 data um because it doesn't work well to compare back um to 21 and then skipping back to 19. So I'm just going to focus on those two years. Before we look at actual MCAS results, I think it's helpful to remind ourselves of our student population and the demographics of our population. Um, it's, this is um, you know, a set of information that gives you sort of a three-year perspective. Um, and you can see some of the changing demographics in Northborough. Um, you know, our populations, um, as our, you know, just small changes, but as our, our population of white students declines, we see an increase that we were, have talked about previously, um, that we in Rota's presentation previously, um, and in other occasions of um populations of, of non-white students. We also see um the high needs group has increased. That's a group that includes um students with disabilities, low-income students, and English learners. So just um, again, context for us to understand. Overall, our population size is very steady um in the big picture. Again, um, probably a reminder for most people, but um the achievement levels for MCAS are in four categories. Um, so starting at the top, we have exceeding expectations, which is generally um used a blue color for exceeding expectations in most of the graphics. Meeting expectations, which is really saying that you're meeting the grade level expectations and you're academically on track, is the green. And then partially meeting and not meeting are considered sort of the below-grade level, levels. So some of the data we'll look at will talk about the percent of students who are meeting or exceeding. So that's really looking at their meeting grade level benchmarks or um beyond that, those sort of top two categories. So first we'll focus in on English Language Arts. Um, the, I'm going to reveal this gradually so that it's not too overwhelming, but basically, um, this is two years' worth of data, the, that is grade three. Um, and if you consider the green and blue together for meeting expectations or exceeding, what you're seeing there is that in grade three, there's from 22 to 23, there is a larger number of students who are meeting or exceeding in 23 compared to 22. Um, it's important to remember, those aren't the same kids, right? That's looking at how are we doing in third grade one year compared to the next? You could now reveal fourth grade and say, well, the kids who were in third grade in 22 are the students who were in fourth grade in 23. Um, it's a little hard to tell from this graphic, but there is um, and let's see, I have my numbers here. Um,
It's like a slight decline.
It's a, it's like a, it's probably a wash, like it's pretty much steady. So there's a lot of different ways you can slice it, but really if we look sort of across the grade levels, when we're looking in aggregate like this, we're really um, you know, looking at, are we sort of holding steady or improving um in these areas? And overall, when you look at cohorts of kids, which we're probably better off looking at growth measures for that, but when you look at this, um, we do see that our scores are coming back from the pandemic. And if we look back to 21 and sort of where the goal, the goal as a state was to say, so we saw dips in the pandemic and are we sort of on the, on the upswing again? And I would say as a district, we are say, seeing that yes, we are. Um, this is just the straight percentages of students who are meeting or exceeding. Um, we do typically exceed the state percentages as we have continued to do. And this is aggregate for third through eighth grade, kind of all combined. So student growth percentile, which, oh, why did that not advance up there?
Is it frozen? It looks frozen.
Yes, it is. Oh, caught up, okay. Oh, no, it didn't, that's weird, because my screen seems to show.
Joan, are you still there?
It's weird, that what you and I-
Joan, can you hear me? I apologize, we're just having a little technical delay.
Did you get disconnected? Mary looks like she's moving again. Mary, can you hear me?
I think they're all frozen.
Oh, now Joan is moving. It says I do.
Yes, you are.
Right left.
I think we're back.
So they're moving anywhere, it's back from here. I know. Oh, Mary's, Mary's giving me a thumbs up.
Yeah, we're back.
But it's, the slides are still not the same.
I'm just supposed to replay. Do you want to recast?
I think Greg was the recast. Alright, we'll try again, thank you, Owen. Um, okay, so student growth percentile is another measure um that the state provides to help us look at how students are progressing. Um, the way student growth percentile works i- is a measure of a student's progress and basically about how much they are changing over time. So there is no growth percentile for third graders because it's their first time taking MCAS. But after that, what they do is look at students compared to a cohort of students who did similarly to them in the past. And then they say basically, if you imagine this group of kids who had a similar um track record, they place them in percentiles by the ones who grew the most to the ones who actually potentially did worse or grew the least. And you have a range from, you know, 0 to 100% of um the amount of growth that you showed compared to like peers. So when we, one of the ways to look at this, this is um a graphic that shows growth and achievement together because really you need to look at both of those things together. And if you think about this is, there's four quartiles here, or four quadrants, sorry is the right word. Um, you have in the upper left, low growth but high achievement, because achievement is on the Y-axis, it's the percent of students who are meeting or exceeding. Below that, in the lower left quadrant, you would have low growth, low achievement. If we go over to the right, we have high growth, low achievement. And then up top right, we have high growth, high achievement. Um, so obviously we'd like to have high growth, high achievement. Um, it's, it also depends on where you're coming from as to how much growth there is to, to be had. Um, in this case, the star represents the state and the circle represents Northborough, grades three through eight in ELA. So that is signifying that we have a gr- average growth percentile of 52. So, you know, just a little bit above average growth percentile. And then 55% of our students were meeting or exceeding um in grade three through eight in ELA. So that is what that is showing. Um, this is showing our growth percentiles by grade level for 2022 and 2023. Um, and they do um, you know, vary from grade level to grade level, from year to year, a little bit, but I think when we think about sort of the range that we're in, you know, in that, sort of hoping to be in that 50th percentile and above, um, so that we're, you know, staying in that average to above-average level of growth. The other way we look at the data is to look at disaggregated data. So being able to look at um by different subgroups, whether it be by race or ethnicity, whether it's um by uh disabilities or, or students who do not have disabilities, male, female, there's a lot of different ways the data is sliced. Again, I think it's really important, hmm, the screen is lagging again. sorry, the screen is not caught up with, with our laptops, but um, again, I think it's important to think about both achievement and growth. So um if you look at the average scaled score, which is those numbers that are in the 400 to 500 range, that's your achievement, that's another way of looking at achievement. Or you've got the levels of exceeding, meeting, partially meeting. And then SGP is your growth percentile, student growth percentile. And so looking at those things together is important because um there might be some of our student groups that are lower achievement than other student groups. And so then we're really wanting to look at the growth and say, you know, are we low, it's again those quadrants, right? Are we lower achieving and lower growth? Or are we making progress in terms of the growth and therefore um hopefully over time closing that gap? Um, I'll go through some of the same information with math. Um, so we can look by grade level at the achievement levels in math. So again, the blue and the green are meeting and exceeding. Um, and again, sort of looking at, you know, how many of our students are falling in those categories. it's lagging again. So um, again, with the math, the, you know, when we look at the numbers, looking at sort of third grade in 22 compared to third grade in 23, in general, um, in most grade levels, we're either holding steve, steady or seeing improvement. Um, and then um, you know, we're able to also look at cohorts of students and um see some improvement there as well, which again is probably better represented through growth percentiles. So in aggregate, um, the district has 57% of students were meeting or exceeding in 22, 56% in 23, which really, you know, is, is basically holding steady in that area. Um, when we look at our achievement and growth together, we again are in a very similar place to where we were in ELA, um, kind of straddling the line on, above the middle in achievement, so 56% of our students are meeting or exceeding and right in the middle in terms of growth percentile, um, at a 50 for our average growth percentile. And again, these are our growth percentiles by grade level in math. And again, the disaggregated data with both the achievement and the growth. One of the things that I think is important to realize as we look at the disaggregated data and with Rhoda and Selvi here, I know they can appreciate that, um, particularly for our Ls, this is not a, um, data point that we rely on heavily because it's not a reliable measure of their abilities, given the language, um, barriers. They are required to take it, but it is not, um, you know, a strong indicator for us, um, of, of what they're capable of doing. In science, technology and engineering, students, um, take this test in fifth grade and then in eighth grade, and it is a cumulative test, meaning that the test they take in fifth grade includes content from the previous years. And then the assessment that they take in eighth grade is cumulative up till eighth grade. So, um, it's different from the other, us, other disciplines in that way. This is our fifth grade results and it's almost identical from twenty-two to twenty-three. Um, and then these are our eighth grade results. If we look at our, um, percent of students who are meeting or exceeding, we have seen, um, in, so in twenty-two, we saw that our eighth grade had a much higher percentage than our, um, fifth grade. And I think some of that, some of that is expected in the sense that it is a separate subject by the time they get to middle school. Um, and so there's a different sort of amount of time and level of emphasis. But, um, I think that's something for us to watch to see sort of what those twenty-three results are showing us. I don't, I don't think one year of data can tell us too much of a story, so it's something for us to watch, I think, over time. Um, in the science, technology and engineering, we don't have growth percentiles um, because of the nature of it being three years apart. So we don't have that data to look at, but we can still look at disaggregated achievement data. So I think one thing that's helpful to try to share with you is a little bit more information about how the schools and the teachers actually use this data. And, um, they actually, the aggregate ga- data that we were just looking at is not typically what they are looking at, at a school level and at a classroom level. Um, they're, they're drilling down more and they might be looking at the school level, they might be looking at a grade level. But then they're also really looking at the level of item analysis and individual student results, thinking about whether student results match what they're seeing through other assessments and through sort of day-to-day work, um, and really triangulating the results. Um, they're also thinking about if students, if the results don't match, um, in either direction, what might be the barriers? Let's say that the MCAS results are higher than what we're seeing on a day-to-day basis, what is that telling us about? And what are the barriers for that student or vice versa? Wow, this student is very successful in school, but struggling with MCAS. What, what's going on there? So that's, you know, really the level that we're trying to drill down on these results. So in the item analysis, I'll just show you, um, some samples so you have a sense of what this can look like for the principals and for the teachers. Um, they are able to look at this in multiple ways. This is a table where obviously the print is really tiny, but what it's showing you is like, if you look at, this is already sorted. And it is looking at the difference between how this, the average percent of students who got a particular item correct, and then it's comparing it to the state. And in this one, this item that I circled, um, it is item number eight. And it's telling you that the school thirty-three percent, um, had it correct. Whereas at the state, it was thirty-seven percent correct. So we actually did worse than the state. Typically, we don't do worse than the state on questions, so that would be a question that then they might say, we want to look at that question. And so they can actually, they would pull up the exact question. Um, unless there are a few questions that are not released items and you wouldn't be able to pull up. But most of them, they can pull up the question and think about, why might that be? Why might it, and they can drill down to the level of individual students. Another way that they can look at this is graphically. And so, um, you can see that's the question that we just talked about. It's often teachers and grade levels really like looking at it graphically because it's just really visually obvious to say, wow, our line, the blue, the light blue line dips below the state line on that item. And we can do the same thing, say, let's take a look, what is that item? Um, you know, there's another one that I circled where they're saying, whoa, you know, we're really right exactly the same as the state. Let's take a look at that item. So that's some, and, and with every item, if we go back to the table, we can correlate and have the information of exactly what standard that is. We can look at where it is in the curriculum, um, all of those things. So that is, is a more, um, typical way that a school and teachers and principals are looking at the data. And, and finding it useful, and that's a practice that we do every year with the data. Um, so I wanted to also share with you that, as I, as I said, this is just one source of data, so I wanted to just show a few of the other sources of data that we're triangulating with and that are sort of part of the landscape in which we operate. So you've heard about DIBELS data. So this is just to show you a few different DIBELS reports, so you can sort of say, oh, okay, these are other sources of data. This is an annual look at a DIBELS report for a whole grade level. So this is looking at all kindergarteners in Northborough. This is from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we give the DIBELS three times. So there's the beginning of the year administration, the middle of the year and the end of the year. And what you're seeing there is we have a hundred and fifty kids who took it in the beginning of the year, and that's our N. And then we did a hundred and fifty-two and then a hundred and fifty-three at the end of the year. The red is intensive support, yellow is, um, strategic support, green is core support and blue is core plus supporters. I'm not sure how they read the carrot. But, um, basically your red is where we're saying, okay, what are the interventions that need to be put in place for these students and for some of our students in the yellow? Um, and what we want to see, which we do see in this graphic, is the number of students in the red. Where we start the year at thirty-six, by the end of the year, that red is down to ten. Right? And so that's kind of seeing our intervention work at work. And, and probably even more exciting is our red and yellow combined. You know, goes from, and this is what we would expect with kindergarten, right? We're going to see the most dramatic changes in kindergarten. So if we, just to show you a few more grades, you know, sort of looking for similar progressions, but there's obviously always stories behind the data. So this isn't the only way. A teacher would look at this dizzying picture. What this would be is on the left-hand side would be a list of names. It would be their roster of their class. The far right column is the composite score. That's sort of your combined score on DIBELS, which is what we were just looking at. When we're in here, those are composite scores. All of the other columns leading up to the far right are specific skills within the DIBELS assessment. And it's telling you how each child did on each of those specific aspects of their reading skills. So now you have this much more detailed look at an individual student. And this is what the principals, the reading specialists, the teachers sit down and, and really make their decisions, not just who needs intervention, but exactly what kind of intervention. Is it the classroom teacher doing specific type of work and with which kids? Then if we have students who are receiving intervention, these are progress monitoring reports. So this shows you as students are receiving specific support, we're monitoring how are they doing and how would we expect them to be doing, um, on these specific areas? So this is in, um, related to nonsense word fluency, which is one of those columns. And then it's saying, okay, that's something we are trying to work on with this child. And, you know, how, how are we doing with that? Another source of data, this is, um, one of our Google Sheets that we use for collecting data. This is a math sheet. And this includes our envisioned topic assessments. There would again be a list of students' names on the far left here. This would be what a teacher would see for their class. And they have topic assessments related to, from invasions. They have on the far right here, these are fluency assessments related to math fluency. And if this was a classroom teacher's sheet, they would have different tabs at the bottom where they could see last year's assessments for their students. They could see SEL data, they could see ELA data, and it would all be in these different sheets. The SEL data that would be in one of those sheets is our SEL screener data. Um, this is just a sample. Again, this would be a list of students on the left. And a teacher could look at this to say, are there certain students where there are some SEL areas that I need to work with the team and we need to think about what supports we need to provide? Or they might look at it and say, with my class, are there, like I notice a pattern where emotional behavior is a place where there are multiple kids? And how might I want to think about that in terms of our second step work and the work we're doing as a class? So the last thing I wanted to share was, so we, this is just a few samplings. We also have our Elevate platform, um, and our access data, um, lots of other sources of data. But a really big data project that we have been working on behind the scenes is our use of AnalyticView, um, which is the data dashboard that we've been developing. Um, we're partnering with a company called AnalyticView. Um, Julie Doyle and Julie Marshall, um, have really taken a lead on this. It is a, so coming out of our equity audit, one of our, um, goals and action steps was to build a data dashboard where we could consolidate all of the data that we have. We have so much data and so many different sources, but people have to log on to all different places to see it all. And so what we're doing with AnalyticView is, um, creating a hub where an administrator or a teacher can log on and have access to all these sources of data from Power School, from DIBELS, from MCAS, from attendance, from discipline, um, data, demographic data, disability data. It's just this wealth of data. It is exciting. Right now administrators are using it. And the goal is that in the fall, we'll be moving to teachers, um, using it. Some teachers already have access. Um, a lot of the visuals that I showed you tonight were from AnalyticView. And then it has the ability to filter and, um, a lot of different analytic tools within it. So that is kind of where we're heading and, um, hopefully making it easier and easier for teachers to use all of the data.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you putting us all together for us. I also appreciate you being pushed off. We pushed you off a few months.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I appreciate. Yeah, so I appreciate that. Um, when I looked over, you know, we get our things ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
So I made some questions in the middle of those. So you did answer most of them. One of them was about, um, the percentage, like, can you look, when you get the MCAS? Because I noticed when I got my girls, at the bottom of it, it had like, you know, certain questions. So that's what I was wondering, like, can you guys actually look at a question and see like, okay, well fifty percent of the kids are getting this one wrong, this question wrong. So what is the information? So it's good to know that you guys do have that access to see.
We do.
What it is and you can adjust, um, what it is. That question, that item eight, I have no idea. There, the way, the reason why that's thirty-three percent is that's everybody's guessing, A, B, C, D. That's the only thing I can think of because I am, I don't know. I don't get, can you explain it to me? I don't understand. I don't understand it. I'm totally baffled by it. So that was that. And then, um, the data sheets tab, so that's what, so these are going to be for, every student is going to have a tab that has all the stuff?
So it can be.
What is the way of it?
It can be used in all different ways. Um, you're talking about in AnalyticView?
Well, the AnalyticView and then the slide before it, um, you said that, and the, you, you said that on the bottom, there would be different tabs.
Oh, so actually.
So I didn't know if, I didn't know if like, is there, does each student have something that has all their data in it and you can access it from kindergarten to twelfth grade?
So that is what we're building with AnalyticView.
Okay, so that, that's what I was thinking.
The Google Sheet, which is what's up, is what we did in the meantime to, it was a sort of stepping stone toward AnalyticView. In AnalyticView, um, which is our future. Um, and our, I mean, our present, but it's also our future. You can look at data in a lot of different ways, and one of the things you can go is to an individual student dashboard. And when you go to that dashboard, you see all of, first of all, we can work with this company and we are working with them to customize. What do we want to see when we look at a student dashboard? What do we want, not want to see? What should not be visible? But you can see, um, as much as we have put in. So right now, we have all of this year's data, some of last year's data, we're trying to get as much as we can, and then we will be building forward.
Going forward, yeah.
So if I pull up a student right now, I can see how they did on last year's MCAS, how they did on this year's MCAS. I can pull up those math scores for this year. I can pull up, um, their SEL data for this year. If it's a, um, middle school student, I can see their grades in their current courses. I can see their grades in last year's courses. So we pull everything from Power School. We pull from DIBELS, we pull from Envision, we pull, um, from those Google Sheets right now. Eventually, we'll be able to enter data directly into it where we need to. It's really powerful.
And do you envision ever having parents have access to that or being able to see it? Like, I know some parents are very involved, like, and they know, you know, maybe they're a speech pathologist, or maybe they're, you know, child education, something that they know, like, they know the DIBELS. They know, they know all the background stuff and they might want, you know, access to that. Like, would that be something that you guys would be sharing or no? How is that?
I think it's a good question. I mean, it is absolutely, um, in our vision that we should be able to sit at a conference with a parent, pull up a student's dashboard and be looking at it together. And sort of saying like, you know, might want to talk about attendance data and talk about, you know, the implications of their attendance data and the patterns that we're seeing. Whether parents would have a login at some point is not something we've talked about at this point. I think parents have access to grades and things in other ways, but it's something we could certainly think about and consider.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions. Do we want to start with Joan or end with Joan?
All right, Joan, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And Kelly, your questions and your comments will help to answer some of the questions that I had. Okay.
Yes.
Is my sound quality okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so Stephanie, I have one question on this line about the, uh, disagreeing in math and in, and in grade three and four. And that was the other school group. And the right before this one was for EL. And then it says EVER. Wow. What is EVER EL?
Luckily, our experts are here, but I, I think what it means is you can have, so you can have students who are currently Ls. You can have students who are formerly Ls who we still follow. And then you could have students who we don't follow anymore. They've sort of passed out of being Fels. And then you could have students who we don't follow anymore, they've sort of passed out of being Fels. But they were once an L. I think that's what EVER Ls refers to. And I'm getting the nods from Sylvie and Rhoda that I got it right.
Okay, thank you, because I never heard of that before. And my next one is, how can we inform parents on these scores and all the other assessments?
How do we inform which parents?
Parents, yeah.
Parents.
They get a pamphlet from the state, I think, does it come from you guys or the state? I feel like it came from the state. I think the state directly sends it to each parent who takes, whose kids take it.
Oh, I understand that, but I think, I think that a lot of this needs to make to parents. Is there ever an information way for parents?
It's a great question, Joan, we have not had a specific information night on MCAS. I do think that, and I think Mary would probably attest to the fact that there are definitely parents who will come to conferences or come to their teachers or principals with questions, either about understanding the results or about if there was a sort of a surprise, where they said, this isn't what I expected. It is not uncommon that they will bring that to us and we will talk it through with them.
Okay, so I think a parent information that was very helpful to explain all the things that you're doing and to show that, if you must get a printout, some of this part of them can be included.
Yeah, I think that could be very helpful.
And we, my next one is, do we provide teachers to delve into this through faculty meetings? And do we look at areas where domain may be improvement?
Uh, yes, so I think a lot of the principals probably do it through professional learning community meetings. But they might also use faculty meetings, but it is definitely sort of an organized, there is like an organized time. One of the things we're excited about with Analytic View is that in the past, teachers actually couldn't access sort of the, the kids that are, let's see, they can access the kids that are in front of them now. They can't access all of the data themselves as teachers right now. Principals actually have to get some of the data and print it and provide it to teachers. With Analytic View, we're going to be able to give teachers more direct access to it so that they have an even more ability to analyze the data. Some teachers.
And on this analytic.
I was just going to say, some teachers really dig into it on their own.
Can you share?
Go ahead.
Right, I apologize.
That's okay, you go.
On this analytic view, do you ever look at a class and follow it from third grade to eighth grade to compare it to among itself instead of comparing it to another year of a grade class?
Yes, we could, we could do that. We will be able to do that as we collect data over time.
Okay, my last one is, I love the next part of the deck. If we get good progression of leading the years, end of year, how those colors were moving to the mastery. And it's, and I think that the experience was a great achievement of the students and the teachers in the ELLA area.
Yes, it is very exciting. Thank you, Joan.
Thanks, Joan. Kristen?
Joan actually asked and got answered a couple of my questions too. But one of the things I was thinking about was, as you mentioned, there's a lot of data. Probably a lot of the things you look at, which is awesome, I loved you. But I was wondering for the MCAS, what do you think the MCAS brings, MCAS, sorry, I'm used to the MCAS.
Yeah, yeah.
The MCAS brings to the table that the other pieces of data don't. Like, obviously, you're looking at a student, you're going to look at everything holistically. But what is unique about the MCAS that really benefits you? As opposed to the other assessments that we're talking about?
That's a great question. I do think the MCAS is, I mean, because it is sort of a big picture summative, you know, type of assessment, and it is not curriculum based, DIBELS is not either. But a lot of our assessments, like if you take math, for example, are curriculum based assessments. So like invisions, we use assessment, assessments from invisions to assess how kids did on invisions units. So I think it is helpful that MCAS is one of the points where we're assessing kids on the standards with something that is not directly from the curriculum that we use. So I think that's something that it brings. I also think it is helpful in the aggregate to look at, well, I say in the aggregate, I mean, not student by student. It is helpful, I think, to look at the subgroups, to look at, you know, the aggregate measures and sort of see that zoomed out big picture. I don't know if you have any other thoughts, Greg?
No, I think it allows us also to look at curriculum and its effectiveness over years. So that log and to look at data and how kids are performing to say, okay, our math curriculum isn't as impactful as we would hope. And therefore, we can, we should be looking at the math curriculum more closely. But I agree with Stephanie, I think there's, there's no one data point or assessment that gives us the whole story. So this is an important piece to the many pieces that, that we put together to tell a story about a student and a school.
And just to give an example of what Greg was just saying, historically, we have seen through our MCAS, actually in South Row and North Row, in the elementary years that we haven't done as well on measurement during the years that we've been using invisions. And so our math coordinator, they have sort of said, okay, in what ways do we need to supplement? What this curriculum is offering in the area of measurement? Because we consistently, over multiple years, have not done as well in that area. So that's an example of where MCAS can be like a helpful measure of in what ways is the curriculum supporting the standards.
Can I try to answer that? Can I answer? Just from my own personal experience in another district as a teacher. I think that that picture of teachers all working together at a table, either during a staff meeting or PD, that's, at least from a teacher perspective, really valuable. Where we can actually say, hey, ooh, our students do not do well on this question. Let's click in, let's see what the question is. And then we sort of get to do a self-check. Did we teach that well? What kinds of curriculum materials were we using to teach that content? Is there something you can change? Or maybe sometimes we learn, we don't actually think that that question was asking something in a clear concise way. We actually think there was maybe some confusion from the students' end. Did they understand the question? Or maybe the question was worded in a way where like, oh, I don't think we've actually practiced questions that sounds like that. That's something that we need to integrate into our practice. So at least from a teacher's perspective, I think looking at the data, that's what we bring to the table and doing that self-check of, are we taking the curriculum that we're supposed to be teaching? And are students learning it? It's not perfect, but that's, that's the practice that I assume sort of happens in this district, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
You mentioned too, there's been really great as far as looking at equity and access, right? And obviously, you can dial down, as you said, on those groups. Aside from mediums, we'll get individual groups. Are there specific examples made where you've taken that data and said, okay, we're going to change this based on that? Or even tell me more about how it's helped with equity and access?
MCAS specifically or sort of all the data? I don't know if I think MCAS alone has, I'm trying to think of an example.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we look, you know, if we look at the subgroups, you know, if we look at the RL population, for example, we triangulate that with our access data. We look to see how are they performing relative to, you know, other, other populations? We look at our special education subgroup and really think about, okay, what are, you know, how are they growing compared to other subgroups? You know, what do we need to do in terms of teaching and learning or instructional practice? What do we need to change? You know, so I think, you know, we are looking at the subgroup data. That's where we get most of our information around, what do we need to do differently? And how do we need to support the students so that they're, they're performing, you know, at their maximum level?
Yeah, and a good example of that is related to the special education population. Again, a math example has been really thinking about, we've had a lot of conversation in recent years when we look at the MCAS data. Students' IEP goals are not always, don't always match grade level standards. And so they then are put into an MCAS situation where they're being tested on grade level standards. But their IEP goals may not be there. And so we've had a lot of conversations about how do we both address IEP goals and make sure students are being exposed to grade level content? And that's in ELA as well, and it's been a big part of the wit and wisdom conversation of. So does, so we have made some changes, for example, with wit and wisdom about saying, when do we provide specially designed instruction outside of the classroom versus inside of the classroom? Because if they are never part of those grade level conversations with complex texts during that wit and wisdom lesson, because they're being pulled out for special ed services, then they're not going to be prepared when they're faced with that reading assignment on the MCAS. So those are some adjustments we've been making about looking at some of our scheduling around specially, specially designed instruction for students on IEPs.
I would also add gender, you know, we look at gender, male, female, and performance. Socioeconomics we look at, so, you know, if, if the data shows that socioeconomically it's having a factor on a student's performance, it's a question, how can we help build that student scheme and that prior knowledge? So we're, I would say that the subgroup data is some of the most important data that we use to make informed decisions about our students. The aggregate tells a big picture, but it's really when we start looking closely at, at the subgroups and how they're performing that we then can take action specifically to those subgroups.
With the, when you were going over the MCAS, in 2021, you said it was modified, just for my own information. Did you learn explaining what that means?
Yes, and I probably won't get it all perfect from my memory. But basically, what they did is they shortened the assessment. So students did not all even take the same assessments. So some students were taking sort of one part of the assessment, some students were taking another part of the assessment. And it was sort of like a sampling exercise across the whole state. So students took shortened subsets of the assessment, basically. I think, does that sound accurate, Lauren, as you recall?
I think it was one day of math, one day of ELA, instead of two.
And they weren't all the same?
No.
Like you might have.
It was shortened during the day too.
Yeah.
It's very short.
I think the purpose of assessing students at that time was not necessarily for accountability data at the state level, but really to give districts actionable data on how students are performing in the current environment. I think the data was, was useful at that point. But comparing it to other years was really challenging. And I think now we're at a point where, you know, we're back to pre-pandemic and having a dataset that we actually can use and really inform our work.
Yeah.
But it was still, at what point, I guess I should ask, is it required? Was it still required that they did something? Or I seem to have some memory of being told my child didn't have to take it back.
There was one year, the nineteen twenty, I believe, that was the year of the pandemic. That in the spring, when the pandemic arrived, they did not administer MCAS.
Right, it was, yeah.
That was that, yeah.
But other than that, everybody should have taken something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You mean like opt out? Can I take out?
Right, yeah.
Is that, yeah, I mean, technically, technically, anybody can opt out, but the district gets a zero, right, for that?
Yeah, I mean, technically, according to the state, there's no such thing as opting out, because we do get a zero. So it's, it's a, it depends, it depends who you ask, right? Like, from some perspectives, people will say, well, you can always opt out. And the state's party line will be like, no, there is no such thing as an opt out. Your participation rate is, yeah.
So it, it indirectly does affect us if more people who, you know, opt out and choose not to do it for one or two students.
It will draw down.
It draws down our overall numbers because.
So would that draw down the participation? It would draw down the participation rate, they, or do they kind of, oh, so that ninety-nine percent participation rate actually doesn't count the people who opt out?
Yeah.
They just count as you filled in your name and got a question wrong?
So if we, if we have a hundred students in our enrollment, a hundred students were supposed to take MCAS and only ninety-five do and five opt out, our participation is still a hundred. And those five students who've opted out basically get no points, no accountability data is applied to the district. So it actually lowers, lowers our accountability ratings.
And there's no way for you to go in and try and tear that out?
Well, we can pull it from our analysis internally.
Right, well, I look at my grades and I'm like, okay, I've got these two way down here. I'm going to shake out an Excel sheet and see what's actually happening in my group, yeah. So, well, then that kind of puts a new light, I guess, on that ninety-nine percent with the high participation rate. Does that, that includes opt?
We do, I mean, historically, we have not had a lot of opt outs as a district. It's not been a big storyline here. Yeah.
Right, yeah, I do remember being told as a parent, I was kind of like, I kind of want them to do it. Like, you need to just do it, like, but that's a lot of conversation probably.
I feel like you can put as much pressure on a student about the performance and the results of it. Or you can choose to not and just have them like, doing it for like, the practice sake and the purpose sake and like, the routine and like, I mean, there's going to be standardized tests that they have to do that they have to do well in in order to do certain things like later in life. You know, if you want to go to med school, if you want to go to grad school, you want to, you know, there are tests that you have to do, like, well on against.
And I, I think typically, I think our teachers and our principals really talk to the kids about this being less about them and more about how are we doing at teaching you and supporting your learning? And that this is really helpful information to us as a system, both at the level of school and district, but also at the level of state. And, you know, across the state, like, we then also look at our MCAS data compared to NAEP data, which is national data, to be able to say, how are we doing as a country? And NAEP data gets compared to international data. So, you know, I, I think our teachers and our principals really try to say to the kids, it's not something to be worried about, it's, this is not something that, you know, has an impact on you as an individual student, but it does help us to teach you better.
And, and the reality is, when we look at the high school data of MCAS and participation and how many students pass MCAS, it's really a floor benchmark for us.
Yeah.
Our students do very well, you know. So I think our students are achieving, are meeting the standard. But for us as a district, it's really, it's the floor standard and not the ceiling. So it's something we keep in mind, but we always, you know, work with parents, especially at the elementary level and say, this is a journey. And that the data supports that if your child continues on the journey, they'll have great success when they take the MCAS when they're at the high school level. And it counts for a graduation.
For graduation, yeah.
Building on some of Joan's questions, obviously, you have the two years because of COVID. But pre-COVID and moving forward, you said, did you expect to look at more years? Do you normally have like, things like standard deviation between all, all third grade for the last five years? How much has that actually changed? Or the kids who were in third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade right now, like, some of these go up or down a little bit, but there's no way for me to tell. Say, the third graders from 2022, who are the fourth graders in 2023, seem to have gone down, but doesn't matter, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So pre-COVID, could you see those statistics and say, hey, this was actually mattered? Or actually, this has gone up and down in third grade for the last five years the same way? It doesn't matter, or is that just not something that?
Yeah, is it significant?
Right, right.
Is it significant or not?
You know, I think that we've, we do have the data, the tools that we have with MCAS. We'd have to take the data and put it into other stat tools to be able to do that analysis. I think when we had four, or five, or six, or seven years of data, it was easier to do.
Yeah.
It is something that, you know, we do ask the question, is, is it significant? And if there's a particular grade level or group of students, we will look at that more closely and do the math and kind of get a different picture of the data from a stats perspective.
One of the challenges, I think, has been that there's kind of moving targets around, they, they don't tend to keep the assessment the same for that many years in a row. Or they redefine subgroups, like, what was low income became economically disadvantaged, went back to low income. And so there's, sort of, like, so right now, for example, there's changes that are being made to the science MCAS coming up in the future. There's changes that are being made to the, there's now a civics assessment in eighth grade, which is being given this year for the first time. So I think, which is a good thing, because they are. So I think, which is a good thing because they are developing and trying to sort of keep up with learning theory. And these new assessments have performance tasks in the science and the social studies. But it makes it hard to do these sort of, you know, now I can't think of the word, over time. Longitudinal, yeah, sort of, yeah. You know, it makes it hard to kind of do that kind of statistical assessment because they keep changing it.
Right, yeah, it's great to assess the assessment too, but.
Yeah.
I think when we look at, you know, multiple years of data for a cohort of kids, that what we're seeing, the trend is a positive slope. Like it's it's trending, you know, it's a positive improvement over over time. I think there's the challenge too, is there's so much time we could spend analyzing the data. This is a spring assessment, we typically get the results summer, we hit the ground running in the fall. You know, part of our goal really is to try to make the data accessible to teachers. So they're not spending a ton of time having to collect it and make sense of it, putting it at their fingertips so they can use it. You know, when it makes sense for them to kind of dive in and think about their students and get to know their students.
On some of the data that you showed for the English language arts, with the average student growth percentile by grade, there were a couple, mostly they kind of stayed the same. But there were a couple where if I compared like grade four twenty twenty two was fifty nine. And then in fifth grade, which these should be the same students, right, in twenty twenty three, they were at forty one. And what is that some of the points where you look at it and go, wait a minute, what happened there? Or because then the same thing, I think, seventh grade in twenty twenty two, that should be the same students in twenty twenty three in grade eight, they went up by almost thirty points.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, those are the places where we really have to dig in and look at individual students in classes and say like, what? Because that's an average growth percentile. And so then saying like, well, okay, what what's the difference here? Are we talking about the same students and, you know, what accounts for this change in one direction or the other?
Right, yeah, so how much do you opt out of?
Yeah. Or opt back in.
Right, yeah. Oh, what what's a title one student?
Title one is, so in the, I wonder, I should look at the numbers of what they have there. So tip title one are, let me just look at what the numbers are of what they have. Twenty two students include, so they probably what they are using there. Well, title one is associated with low income because that's how the funding is sort of is. But the students who are designated as title one students are don't actually have to be low income students. It means because although the money is sort of associated with low income, it has to be used to provide academic support to students who need academic support within a school where you receive title one funding, which means you have enough students who are low income to receive the funding. But the kids who actually get the support don't themselves have to be of a certain socioeconomic status. So what we do is we typically use our title one funds to provide additional math intervention. And so students who are designated as title one students, I'm assuming, I would have to dig into this, are students that we have designated as receiving that title one support, I think, is what that, because it's a pretty low number.
So those students are are receiving support, the classroom support.
In reading and mathematics, so the two areas that title one supports.
Yeah.
So I have no idea what that was, so thanks.
Cancel, cancel, cancel.
No software update now. You, Grace, you're good. Anything else, Kristen? You're good?
No, I think the rest of it is all writing down what you were saying. Maybe a different pen color or something for questions.
That's why I got my different pen. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Great presentation. And I was thinking kind of what Joan was saying, and I don't know, maybe the idea she was asking about is like, you know, the information and stuff that you were saying. Parents can always access it through these, these school committee meetings and these PowerPoint presentations. So these are always readily accessible, you know.
Oh, sorry, something that came to my mind when we were talking about that, they would have access to, any parent would have access to this data for their student through FERPA, right? Not that anyone would try to block them, I'm getting your back, but.
The MCAS data or all of the data?
Yeah, well, MCAS data, I guess, specifically, but that would be included in like their educational record, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just, I assume that was true, but then I thought.
And they get a report of their MCAS data each year that the child takes MCAS data, they get a printed report. And if they need it translated, it is it is translated, they receive it translated.
Well, I had my report and I was like, oh, I have my last year's one, I'm going to look at it. And I was like looking and then I realized like halfway through that the actual report this year has last year's scores on. Like it it just it just compounds it for you automat. I was like, why am I keeping last year's then? I don't even need last year's anymore, so.
But that next year, you won't have the other year, so you gotta keep that.
No, they every year, it it'll add, it says third, fourth, fifth, yeah, third, fifth, like it has.
Enough through the system, I guess, to say.
You haven't gone far enough to see it, yeah, so I think it just. Yeah, I know. All right, transportation update. Keith, are you excited?
Thrilled, Kelly.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. I I do want to take the opportunity to thank students, parents, schoolly staff, and district staff, especially Sheila and Hannah. As we enter the second half of the school year, the care and consideration that has been given to our students has been exceptional. And our transportation overall is on the improvement cycle. So I am excited to make this presentation this evening. And included in your packet is a document that focuses on the challenges that we're experiencing. The action plans that we're developing and working on with NRT, highlighting some options moving forward. Then providing a recommendation for the twenty four, twenty five school year. As far as the challenges are concerned, we were able to categorize them, meaning one being the impact of the driver shortage on our district. As well as NRT's management of that team and our roots and our crew. So in the document that I shared, we did go into detail about some of those issues. But one thing I wanted to highlight is that due to this driver shortage, our roots and frankly, our students have been impacted between fifty and sixty percent of the days in session. That sometimes will only result in all numbers of students being impacted. Sometimes that number is expounded depending on the day. And I can get into a lot of detail about that, but I'm sure you agree from all. So we did take the opportunity to square these concerns with NRT's executives, Greg and I met with the vice president and regional vice president to outline the challenges. They fully recognized those and put together an action plan that had monthly benchmark. And over the holiday break, I was able to get the latest updates from NRT. And they are making progress that we have outlined for them, which is a very positive step. So overall, we are in a decent position. We met with NRT management this morning. And their ability to have a permanent driver on all three of our buses has improved. And specifically for Northborough, there are seventeen buses for Northborough. And I think as of this morning, we are waiting for one more driver to become full time, which which is exciting. However, today, we had two or three callouts, which is always a daily thing that we're continually managing. But overall, I would say that we are improving. And I can express enough how I appreciate the patience and flexibility that our community has shown. So when we are looking ahead, we have identified four options for consideration. Two of those options are really not feasible and have been ruled out for twenty four, twenty five school year. However, option one, announced and stewed, are viable. And then we do have a recommendation moving forward. So in the report that I provided, we did list advantages and disadvantages of E. And I outlined some of the financial impact that's expected. For option two, which has been discussed a little more widely, is to consider going out for a bid. And the way that the best way I can explain it is that we entered into a three year contract with NRT in July of twenty twenty. And then at the conclusion of the last four year, we extended that contract for a fourth year with a twenty three, twenty four year with what we're currently. We are able, based on that contract, to extend for a fifth year. And that's the thing that we have gone through a great layer of consideration for. So when we do look at the options that are available, some of them are extreme. One would be, which is option four, to bring all transportation services under district operations, which is obviously a huge lift. Option three would be the purchasing of buses, but the contracting of services, which is also a very large thing, but something that we want to continue to explore. It's actually the model that Boston has used in recent years with certainly pluses and minuses for them. When we look at option two, the idea of going out to bid, although that does is appealing for a variety of reasons. One of the things that is been coming up in our research is that if we did go out for a bid process, it did, there's a layer of uncertainty of what the numbers would be coming back. And just based on some of the bids that are currently out, some of the bus companies have reported an increase of between twenty and twenty five percent, depending on the terms of of that contract. And probably we could expect expect the same. So when we are looking, we've got to look pretty quickly for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Our recommendation is to extend our contract to a fifth year with NRT. But with the caveat of having a very clear action plan, also with making sure that the contractual obligations are at the forefront of the conversation with them. And I can say that just from the spirit of the action plan that's been developed so far, I'm feeling pretty confident about that. And I I do feel confident in the recommendation of moving forward with NRT for the twenty four, twenty five school year. What that does mean, though, is that early next school year, probably earlier than now, probably October, November, we'll be working to get a bid out for contract because we can't go to a year six. We would have to enter into a new bid process that would take shape for the twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. So I would gladly answer any questions about the detail that's in the report or certainly any questions that have come up. And I I also appreciate Greg and Becky's partnership as they helped me navigate this. Yes, I handled the day to day and ingrained in that, but they have kept me focused on looking forward and making sure that we investigate all possible options. So Kelly, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Keith.
You're welcome.
I say, hey, let's just buy buses, let's just go, let's do it, let's just, let's just go into the transportation business, people. Does anybody have any question? Chrisa?
I can't remember from our last meeting what questions I actually asked, which ones we were putting off. So forgive me if I'm re-asking questions from last month, but I think we've sort of put them all off. Northborough does not charge anybody for any transportation, right? And I'm wondering, how does that help? What's the pluses and minuses of that? And is that something that was even on the table? It's been like that for as long as I can remember.
Are there comparables that do charge for transportation?
Shrewsbury charges if you live outs, if you live within a mile.
Within, yes, a mile.
If if you live under a mile, then you have to pay. If you live outside of the radius, then you don't have to pay.
What's the fee for inside the mile?
I can find out.
It's when I my kids were in school was about four hundred dollars, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Not a not a insignificant amount.
No, no, but for the year, yeah, and it's whether or not you want to do it. So like I have friends in Shrewsbury who opted to do it because they didn't want to wait in the pickup line, for example.
Yeah.
It was just more convenient.
Yeah.
But that, I guess, my question is, where does Northborough stand on that, right? How did we end up at, if you're under a mile, you don't, you still just get the buses? When, following up on that, when people opt out, right, we get that form, does that impact, how does it impact transportation? And does it impact the budget as well? Like if I'm not ever using the bus and I opt out of transportation, does that decrease our costs at all? Or is it sort of, you're already accounted for everybody, so it doesn't matter?
So do you want to take, we can, the three of us can answer the question. So I think in terms of fee for service for transportation or any fee for service. And I don't want to speak for past committees, but the past committees that I've worked with have been really, didn't really have an appetite to to start charging parents and other fee. Just understanding that it, you know, there's parenting and childhood and life is expensive. The other factor is really we have a partnership with the region and Southborough. So we we see incredible savings because we have that partnership with two other districts. The regional district has regional transportation reimbursement that significantly offsets transportation. Not only for the high school, but also for Northborough and Southborough pre K through eight. The average cost of a bus in a typical district is about seventy five thousand dollars. The way we're maximizing our resources, the average cost of a bus in our district is is between twenty and twenty five thousand dollars. So where we have.
Seventy, those are both annual numbers or one's a capital or?
No, so to operate a bus, pick up students, it's about seventy five thousand is the industry average. The average for us to do that same level of work is about twenty thousand dollars, between twenty and twenty five thousand. So we're, we are.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time.
No, so.
Wrapping my head around that.
Oh, not after you.
So if you take ten buses, for example.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
For a typical district, for, let's say, Shrewsbury or whoever, that's the average cost of a bus. Seventy, you know, seventy five thousand dollars per year. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be their contract, for example. Our contract is twenty thousand times ten buses, it's four hundred thousand dollars. So we are, we are maximizing our resources to cost.
Because of the region.
Yeah, not only the region.
Well, that was my question.
Because it's regionalized, isn't that?
Reimbursed from the state because we're regional or before?
The cost saving really is because we're we're, we have thirty two buses. And then once those buses finish the region, they tier off to Northborough and Southborough. Because they're tiered, that's why we're seeing a a much reduced rate. The same bus company is doing Northborough and Southborough with the buses that they would have been using for region.
Right, okay. And so let's say twenty thousand dollars for that bus because you're tiering the schools. You can use the same bus multiple times in the morning and afternoon. Then because we're regional, you apply for money back from the state, right?
Just for the, yeah, so the the region requires thirty two buses to transport, transport all of the high school students. So we get reimbursed for the high school students' regional transportation reimbursement.
Okay.
Where we then see a savings is the the bus companies usually bid on the region. They have thirty two buses. Once they're done the region, they have thirty two buses that are sitting there not being used. So then they bid on Northborough and Southborough. And as a result, they've received a significant savings due to that circumstance.
Okay. One of the reasons I asked the question too is because it came up in the school committee, the state conference, right? One of the things was, it was a regional district that wanted school committees to fight for being able to charge a fee for people who are more than a mile and a half away from the school because of the cost. So that was just one of the reasons that I just want to understand where they were, what was going on.
So that was, so.
Yeah, I voted against that. I was like, no, and as a parent, I have no appetite for more fees. I just want to understand what the impact of the budget is, especially when we're talking about a twenty potential. I just want to understand what the impact of the budget is, especially when we're talking about a 20, potential 25% increase, which makes my stomach turn a little bit, you know, if next year and the year after, like just trying to think about it.
If we, so a couple of things, so that we get, at the regional level, we get regional transportation reimbursement is, it was supposed to be at 100%.
Based on funding.
We've not seen 100%, we've seen 80%. So what the legislation was, was to allow regional school districts to charge a fee to make up the difference of the state not funding. If, one way to kind of give an example is if Algonquin used NRT with its 32 buses and in Northborough, pre-K through eight, went out and contracted with another bus company, the, the charge for a bus would be 15 buses times $75,000. So, you know, again, we're getting, the challenge is.
I like, I still don't understand why NRT would even bother extending the contract then.
They, they, they're making money too. I mean, they're.
Well, was that in our original contract? It was a three-year contract, right, with our right to extend twice?
Extend one year and then after.
Extend one year and then one year.
So they really have a choice at this point, right? We say we want to keep you for a year. We're stuck for a year or they're stuck for a year.
But I don't think they'd want to lose, because then there's 32 buses that they're.
Right, then they got to go out and try and find somebody to use those buses.
Who will pay for.
So it is guaranteed.
I mean, it's guaranteed, yeah.
Yeah, no, just trying to understand how we use those resources and.
I think part of the, so the, the report Keith put together really is because the same report will be presented to the Southborough Committee and also the Regional Committee. This is not a decision that any one committee can make independently. And it does have a significant impact to the budget if it's decided to go out to bid. That is money that will have to build into the budget to accommodate the 20 to 25% increase we know we'll see. And our recommendation is, again, to extend it for a fifth year because we know that, we know that amount of increase is under $10,000. We had several meetings with some other bus companies. And one, one company in particular recommended that we extend for a fifth year because the value. Said that, you know, it's, they'd be happy to bid on a, on a contract, but the value that we're currently getting, they, they're recommending to districts to stay for another year.
The second part of that question, what happens when people opt out? So when I click that form and say, no, I'm not using the buses, what effect does that have?
Operationally, it's very helpful because what we then do, so first off, we only require families to register for the bus at Algonquin. All other students in K8 are automatically registered and routed. The ridership at Algonquin is so up and down and unpredictable. That is why at Algonquin, we require registration or we strongly encourage. We get about, I think, 75% response rate to that. Principal Evan has been great about doing that. What that ultimately does is helps me design the routes so they're more efficient, so we know exactly the students that we need to transport between the communities in, from Algonquin, because that's the longest trip, right? Especially getting from Algonquin to the south side, it's Melkborough. That registration process for Algonquin really helps us to maximize the resources and then being able to say, you know what, Algonquin doesn't need that extra bus. In the afternoon, that can be used for Melk. So we have taken advantage of that registry process to allocate resources accordingly.
Okay, so then it's K through eight, then you sort of take out everyone?
So we, and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, we route all students.
We, we route all students K8.
Yep. And then through that, you know, and then at the high school level, we were required to route all students. And then because of the opting out, then that's when Sheila can go and uncheck. Like the student is using, isn't using, if the student decides at a different time, you know, in October, I need the bus. Turn that back on and.
Correct.
Okay. On the report that you said, oh Keith, one of the, and I might be reading it wrong, with option one, under disadvantages, it had the 25% increased student cost over FY24. Does that, does that belong in that? If we extend the NRT the fifth year, we're avoiding that, right?
We are avoiding that.
And I was hoping.
That probably belongs in the next row, I would imagine.
Okay, and then I was hoping you could explain the numbers a little bit just because with the FY increases, Northborough, Southborough, and then the total, obviously they're, they're different, but do you mind going into that a little bit more, explaining the actual numbers?
Becky, would you mind taking that and do you do that in break?
Do you want, I can do that. So basically what we took, if we, if, again, the three bullet points should really be in row two. If we go out to bid and we use the current amount we're paying for transportation and add 25%, that's the increase that we'll see to the Northborough transportation line item. That's the 100,008, $100,000 is what we'll see for the Southborough increase. In the regional budget, we'll see a $300,000 increase. That's if we go out to bid and have a new contract.
Okay, versus if we don't, so in, so Northborough would see a 9,300 increase, Southborough 8,000, and then regional, so in total, it would be, you know, low 40s increase.
Correct. And that's a known, that's a known fixed cost that, that's predictable.
That's 2%, what did you budget for in the preliminary budget? Did you?
The preliminary budget, we had the 25%.
You did 20, just, okay.
Oh, wow.
Oh, so that would open up money if we don't go bid.
Yeah.
So now, now we'll present this evening the recommended budget.
Now, moving on. All right, do we need?
I think Joan has her hand up.
Oh, Joan, sorry, Joan.
That's okay. Looking at the different options. On option one, it'd be infused at the conditions of performance. What, can you explain that?
So some of the things that we have expressed in our team is our frustration over their management of the driver shortage, as well as some of the day-to-day management that they've been providing us, especially the lack of communication. These are things that we have identified. And we do have a commitment from NRT that if they do continue providing a service, which they would like to do for the 20, 25 school year, that their community tuning group. So what we are actively working on is we're not waiting for 24, 25 to see that improvement. We want to see it immediately. And I can say that we are, since our meetings and since the action plan, we are overall, we've had a few bad days, but we are seeing overall improved communications, which has been helpful for us then to convey plans to families. So that's something that's key. I think people have been incredibly patient, but be able to provide accurate communication, which starts from them, goes through us, and then out to the impacted families is a key part of making it work on a daily basis. And that has been not followed. And that's why we want to make sure that's improved going forward.
Okay, thank you. And seeing that this is a contract with NRT, are all the other school committees going to be taking a vote? And did the region take a vote in December on this?
So each, each committee in the month of January will, will weigh in and make a decision. So next Wednesday is the Southborough School Committee meeting. And the following Wednesday is the Regional School Committee. So our report that we'll provide them is the same report that is in your packet this evening.
Let's set the precedent off by telling them what to do.
You know, I think, and again, our recommendation to all three committees is to, you know, extend for a fifth year.
Okay, can I, can I make a, or can I make a motion?
I would love that, Joan.
Okay, thank you. I move the committee to extend NRT's contract for a final year, year five, with conditions of performance.
Second.
Is that an acceptable? All right, there's a motion by Joan, a second by Bryce. I think we're good with discussion. I'm going to do a roll call vote since Joan is remote. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. So we are moving to a fifth year with NRT.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Yes.
What happens if the other committees vote otherwise?
Then it comes back.
Then it comes back. It does, yeah. I mean, I don't, I, I.
Right, but I was wondering.
It would come back to us.
Yeah, like if Southborough decides like, no, you know what, we don't want them anymore, then we. Get a hash it out.
I believe at our last meeting, I forget if it was our combined or maybe our December meeting, we discussed having a meeting with Southborough and Northborough talking about transportation, loving the works.
I don't, I think, I think we're going to do this, see if this bides it, and then figure out after that, I think.
Yes, so, so like the Northborough School Committee, you had a special open meeting to discuss the budget. So they will have another special open meeting early next week. So this is on the agenda to discuss. So we'll get a sense of what they're thinking and what direction, no pun intended.
Thank you.
Okay, legislative update.
So no real updates in that front. I think we're waiting for the governor's budget, which we're hoping to actually see in a couple of weeks. And, and I think at this point in time, we're just waiting for the budget's first run of, of the budget.
Great, so brings us to our budget.
All right, so just give me a minute while I figure out managing a remote meeting and doing a presentation. So just give me one second. So will this work is the question. Just give me one second. All right, so, so they can see it from their view and. All right, so, so I'm pleased this evening to present the FY 2025 recommended budget. A lot of work and effort has gone into getting to this point by principals, by central office, leadership team. And just in terms of what our guiding, what our North Stars in terms of the budget, it's our strategic plan, it's our school improvement plans, it's the school committee's budget priorities. Those all play an important factor in terms of making decisions when we don't have resources to everything we'd like to do. So as a district, our mission is quite simple, but it's powerful. It's to educate, inspire, and challenge all students. And really the budget process, we think about the student in mind, the student experience in the classroom, what our schools need, what our teachers need to achieve that mission. And then in terms of our vision, it's what will, what will it take to help our students become collaborators, critical creative thinkers, communicators, socially and civically engaged, growth oriented, and healthy in balance as they progress across the grade levels, between schools, and eventually when they graduate from Algonquin Regional High School. As the school committee is well aware, the budget is a process. So it begins in August, and it's hard to believe we are in December, but in January. We've passed December, we're in January. And in January, we typically present the superintendent's FY 25 recommended budget to the school committee. And I'm pleased to do this, do so this evening. And then April is the important annual town meeting where we seek approval from the citizens. Budget priorities for the school committee, I won't review these in detail, but again, these were very important priorities that helped us internally drive the budget process. Budget impacts, so as we enter a budget year, we always predict what our impacts could be or our variables might be. So one of the impacts was general education, transportation, and what we, which we just discussed and really the potential depending on a decision. So you made that decision, so we can actually cross that out. So that is a known. Supplies and materials, although inflation has moderated, we are still seeing some impacts on supplies and material costs. Textbooks, so when you look at the line item budget, you'll see that there's a significant increase in the textbook line item. And that is really to update and modernize many of the resources our teachers have and our students are using. Instructional software, really a shift from textbooks to instructional software. So the publishers are publishing the software digitally. So we are seeing an increase in our instructional software online item as a result. And then ESTER phase out, so at the end of FY 24, we're required to expend all of our ESTER funds. And that means that we'll need to build those back in FY 25 budget. In regards to what those ESTER funds that we're building back into the budget are, so it's student and staff devices, elementary math curriculum, ELA coordinator, middle school math curriculum, science curriculum, screening tools, and ELK curriculum. So what we built back into the FY 25 budget totals a little over $170,000. So in terms of the budget process, where we started, and I did share this slide at the last meeting in December, the initial budget requests represented a 12.17% increase over fiscal year '24. And we applied circuit breaker. And, and then as a result, the budget that we're working from for the past several weeks was an 8.68% increase. Principals, the finance department did tremendous work and was able to reduce the budget to $29,119,597, which is a 3.99% increase over fiscal year '24. And I'll speak to the specifics of what the 3.99% achieves. So the budget priorities, there were many in terms of positions. The recommended budget does include one position. I highlighted create a health educator position at the elementary level. The priority was to create two. The budget includes funding to create one new position. Also, it does create funding to reestablish a fifth grade strings program. We've had some internal conversations that, with Principal Carb at the middle school level, we feel like we have the people resources and we're exploring potentially starting a strings program at the middle school level. So it might be a five, a five, six. But we think it's important to start at the middle school level and then work our way back to elementary. And we feel, you know, we're exploring a pretty solid plan to do that. And in this budget, there is money to actually purchase instruments or lease instruments for that program.
So families wouldn't have to.
It just.
Because right now, families have to.
We are, we are exploring the options. It could be, it could be the fifth and sixth and seventh grade level, it could be sixth, seventh, and eighth.
We should find out by participation kind of how broad.
Correct. And we're work, and we're working with our music educators to see what they're recommending.
Yeah, they would, they would have a good sense of.
But we feel like there is capacity in, to achieve the school. So also, in the projected, in the recommended budget, we do have adaptive physical education teachers. So this is Northborough's portion of that increase that is also shared at the regional and Southborough level. There is funding for one ESP, additional ESP. And there's funding for an additional special education teacher in, in this recommended budget. If you look at all of the, the costs of all of the proposed positions, again, that was a little over $1.7 million. And from the preliminary budget to the recommended budget, we did look at a five-year plan to see how we can accomplish these positions over a five-year period. And we feel like year one of that five-year plan is being implemented in this recommended budget. So some significant budget offsets. So FY 24, circuit breaker, special education reimbursement. We were anticipating that we were going to use a little over $200,000 of FY 24 circuit breaker in FY 24. We have not had to as a result of some unanticipated changes in, out of district tuitions, which means that we are able to apply the entire FY 24 circuit breaker, special education reimbursement to the FY 25 budget. So that offset is a little over $1 million. And about $200,000 over the preliminary budget that was presented.
Does simultaneously track us back?
We're back on target.
Practice.
Yes. Yeah. The, the, also, circuit breaker, special education, transportation reimbursement remain constant from the preliminary budget to the recommended. And then potential retirements and leave of absences, this picture became more clear to us. So we did receive notification of the retirements that we were anticipating. The deadline still is January 15th, so we were waiting, waiting on a few others. But the known savings at this point is a little over $250,000. So the total budget offsets total $1,482,033. So the recommended budget to the school committee is $29,119,597, which is a recommended budget increase of $1,118,370, or a 3.99% increase over fiscal '24. The recommended budget also includes instructional materials. So continued work with Witton Wisdom, adding a middle school ELA curriculum, Envision ST Math K through five, middle school social studies and science curriculum, Second Step SEL curriculum, K through eight, middle school math curriculum, and student staff devices. So there's significant money for instructional materials in this recommended budget totaling a little over $270,000.
Is a lot of that stuff too from ESTER funds? Was it previous years or?
So a lot of grant writing from Stephanie and the team offset many of those costs. So this is kind of rebuilding back on, onto the budget. So also in the recommended budget, personnel and other materials included in the budget. So we have one health or math educator at the elementary level. So this is, we're still having internal conversations around, should it be a health educator, should it be a math educator? But there is, there is funding to support that. The special education teacher, the one ESP position, putting back the ELA coordinator onto the operational budget, the middle school strings instruments, a human resource information system. So this is software that is shared with the region and Southborough. This is Northborough's portion, portion of it, and will allow us to become much more efficient in terms of HR, in terms of pay war, and the point, point eight adaptive physical education teacher. So that total is $272,500. It also restores the funding for the middle school librarian position that was impacted as a result of the budget landscape for fiscal year '24.
Is the adaptive physical education teacher, is the point oh eight, is that shared also, right? So it's.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a.
It's 40% of a point two FTE.
And then just historical budget increases compared to inflation. So, you know, I think that the school committee has voted, I think, you know, education sound and fiscally responsible budgets. I think each year, we've been able to incrementally make improvements. I think we've been able to sustain and maintain our resources at a high level, even during very difficult fiscal climates. If you look at appropriated FY 21 and FY 22 and looked at inflation rates, you know, we're still recovering from that. That is compounding over years. And if you look at FY 24 and FY 25, you know, we're at that 4% and a little over 4% in FY 24. That's because we're recovering from some of the prior years in terms of the impacts. I would share that the recommended budget is, I think I'm very, I'm very pleased. I think as a leadership team, we're very pleased with where we're at. I think we're able to make some incremental improvements in the areas that were identified in the strategic plan, school improvement plans, and the school committee priorities. And I think it, you know, I'm pleased with where we are in terms of this recommended budget. And with that said, I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to.
So on our December 18th meeting, our subcommittee meeting, I believe we were at like four to five or something like that. So what changed from the three point nine? Was it just extra grants coming in, things like that? And retirements or?
Circuit breaker in there too.
And then circuit breaker, that's what brought it down to three nine nine. Okay. And now, and in this three point nine nine, we have the 20%.
Removed.
That's, you already removed the, so this is the two, this is the, the 2% in it. Okay.
Yeah, so the, those, you know, circuit breaker.
Yep.
That's 260,000 retirements that, that we learned of transportation, removing that 20, 25 increase that was in the preliminary budget allowed us to get to the three point nine nine.
And do you think there might be a couple more retirements potentially? How many retirements came in number wise? Like three, two, three so far?
Yeah, so we, we are, we are waiting a couple others.
A couple other potentially.
So, again, we won't know that information until January 25th. I think what, what this budget, what this recommended budget allows us to do is, as we learn more and we find more, you know, savings, it will allow us to then go back to the budget priorities and say, okay, with this three point nine nine percent budget, we can add in another position. And this is the position that we want to add. I think also internally, we're having a lot of conversations around making sure we're maximizing the current resources we have. That, you know, we, we often talk about, it's not always layering on more and more and more. It's, you know, making sure that the people and the positions that we have are really having an impact on the student's experience in the classroom or in specials. And that, you know, that's our priority.
So thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Becky, for all of your work. I have to talk about music. So I'm obviously extremely happy to see that the strings program is part of this budget. I know that the, the music subgroup that wrote a lead, all of those members would also appreciate that. And not just because music's near and dear to my heart, but I do think that we've talked a lot about how students gravitate towards music. And I really think that's going to enhance the students' everyday experience in our schools. So that's great to hear. But beyond that, I think coming away from this presentation feels a lot different than the last few years. I feel like there was a little bit of uncertainty and panic and scrambling for numbers. And I'm sure that you did a lot of that behind the scenes. I'm sure that, you know, your cool, calm demeanor is probably hiding a lot of that. But I, I do think that part of it is coming up with that five-year plan. So that as a committee, as a district, we have a vision and not just saying, okay, well, what can we afford this year? What can we sort of scrape together? But okay, what do we want to achieve as a district? How can we support our students? And how can we get there? But also, let's figure out how much money we have. And I do think that that's the approach we took this year. So I do appreciate that thoughtful approach. I think that's, that's really just my summary comment. So thank you.
Following on the string, I'll start there with that question. You mentioned starting at the middle school level and then sort of moving down. Is there also a plan in that, that five-year plan in the budget to move up with those students, right? Like fifth grade, sixth grade, when they get to seventh, eighth grade?
So our vision is to have a strings program, you know, late elementary and middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth. I think the work that we need to do is internal work, working with our music experts to say, come up, help us develop a plan. Like, you know, music, what, what's the plan look like? We feel like we do have the resources to do this. And also, one of the things we're working on is, is partnering with Haukunkan. And not just thinking about music as K through eight, but K through 12. And how can we use the K through 12 expertise that we have to really grow and expand these programs? So there is, there is, that is the goal. And that, that plan will be developed. I will share that we have two, two fairly new music educators at Malacan who bring a lot of excitement and passion and talent to the work. And we're seeing, we're seeing having, have a significant impact on the program.
That's great. Yeah, yeah. But memories of violin, you know, which is still there too. I'll be to see that come back as well. I'm wondering, with the instructional software, which I've heard, right? Are there open resources at the K three level, like there are at higher ed? Is that a conversation that happens? I know from my experience at higher ed, like it's one of those things where you look and if there is a great resource, great. But sometimes what you need is just not there. But is that like a conversation that you guys are really having to try and cut down on these costs or?
Sure. And there are increasingly more and more open source curriculum available at the K through 12 level. And in fact, the state is sometimes involved in developing them. Like there's something called Open Sei Ed in science that Massachusetts was one of the states that helped develop illustrative math. There, there are various curricula now that are technically open source. The complicating factor at the K through 12 level is that they then are often published by people on top of being open source. So like you can access, for example, Open Sei Ed. But if you want to have workbooks for kids, there's various providers who will provide workbooks. Or there's other publishers who will bake an online platform that makes a digital journal for kids. So, and then there's other providers who sell you the kits that go with the Open Sei Ed of all of the resources you need in your lab to run those science units. So it's a little bit of a misnomer to some degree when they call them open source, because you end up with this decision of like, so are we going to print all of those pages that kids are going to need? Or are we going to purchase workbooks that have those pages?
I would, I would just add that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has done a nice job over the past several years to really evaluate high-quality instructional materials. So that, you know, that list, that curation of those resources where we.
Very helpful.
And there are some open sources, you know, open source curriculum on there, on those lists. But we're, we're finding there's nothing for free.
It's generally still not free.
You know, and we do at the high school use some open source. But we really haven't used too many at, at the elementary level yet. I mean, if it's a good curriculum and it meets all our needs and does what we, we needed to do, and it's rated as a highly effective curriculum, then we would, if it saved money.
And then Becky and I have these conversations of, are we sending that out to print? Or are we having people print it at the school and then they'll ask us for more toner? And where, you know, and those are literally, we, we work through the pricing of it. And even with some of the resources with Witton Wisdom, do we send it out to print and get laminated? Or are the schools doing it, and it's both a like man hours thing and a resources cost? So there are interesting questions.
Yeah, no, it's never simple. It's, it needs to, in our area, it's, it replaces the textbook. So you don't run into that like.
Yeah.
Platform piece where you're constantly buying it every year.
Yeah.
But then all the other pieces like you're mentioning, they're not.
Yeah.
Somebody always figures out a way to make money.
Yes, they do.
Joan, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'd just like to say, Rick, that you have taking this budget from our last budget, reading that we got in December down to three nine nine is very remarkable. And Becky and Greg and staff, thank you very much for doing this with the sink on, putting in some of our, several of our budget priorities, especially the music program, which I think must be on three plus years of being one of our budget priorities.
Six.
There are so many lifelong skills that a, any type of, each is a student such as self-reliant, co-managable, responsibility, critical thinking, and positivity and enthusiasm. So those are lifelong skills that I think carry through anytime a student is involved in an activity. So my other question to you was, we had a chairperson of special ed. And that was like 80,000. If that would go, what percent is 80,000? A point of, of a percentage would be 80,000 to get a chairperson?
I think, Becky can answer that question. It's point two?
I would say.
It's a point two percent, two tenths. Yes.
Two tenths, okay.
But I think, I think part of, the budget process in our district is, is literally a team sport. So it's not, not make, we don't make decisions in vacuums. It's not me making decisions around something that, that I want or Becky. It's really working with principals, looking at our strategic plan, looking at our school improvement plans, and what are our priorities and what's going to have the greatest impact to students in the classroom. So although we could add a team chairperson in to the budget, I then would want to ask the, the team, is that a priority? Are there other priorities that, that are, that take precedent over a team chairperson?
Thank you, Rick. And I'm glad to hear, like you say, it's a team effort and how we can utilize the taxpayers' dollars in the best usage. And, and I think that's remarkable. So thank you very much. And this, in January or February, when is the best time to take a vote on this? Because we take a vote tonight. We can increase the budget if we should get extra money or can we raise the budget if we take a vote tonight? I know in the past, they said, once we vote a budget in, you cannot raise it because of our words.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Early before, I, I, I don't think we should vote before February, just knowing that we have retirements coming potentially and things. I think, I think February and then usually March, we have the public hearing.
I think we are internally, I think we've, we've done most of the work and now it's waiting.
Yeah.
And it's seeing if other opportunities come about and then we can have more conversations. You know, I've had some initial conversations with the Newtown.
That's what I was gonna, that was my question gonna be.
Still building that relationship.
Yeah.
So that would give us more time to kind of see where.
He's not doing a financial trend meeting this year, I'm assuming.
No. So, I mean, I don't, I think that voting it in February. So, I mean, I don't, I think that, um, voting it in February, it's early February, allows us maximum, maximum flexibility.
And could you just clarify the issue is when we take that vote, can you do two things to that budget in a subsequent meeting? Can you raise it and can you also, I mean, I know you can lower it. But can you raise a budget after you take your initial vote?
I, Joan, I'll need to get some guidance on that. I think, um, I don't want to speak incorrectly. So, I should, I'll, I'll find out. And that's a reason why not to vote the budget.
Yeah, I mean, because I've heard it both ways and we have, you know, in, in the past, we have heard that you cannot, once after the initial vote is taken, you could lower, but you can't raise it. Then I heard something to the contrary. So, that's why I was just asking for the clarification. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you so much. We appreciate all of your time and effort in all this. We are moving on to grant donations approval. We have one listed. It's, I don't know if it's IDEA or if it's IDEA, Part B Federal Target Special Education Program Improvement Grant in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars. I would love to hear more about that.
Becky, do you want to?
Sure. So, this is a grant that the state has made available to districts as we implement the new IEP process.
Yeah.
So, we will be, I know special education will be utilizing these funds to, to educate our educators on that new process and then also, I think, sending information out to families as well.
Will that cover all of the potential expenditures from?
So, this is just Northborough's portion.
Okay.
Southborough also received an offer in the region. So, we have quite a
Yes.
bit of funding to move this forward.
I think they're, yeah, I think they're ready. They're gonna have, they're, we're just about to post for some stipend positions to have school-based leaders
Yeah.
who are helping to lead that work and planning professional development for March fifth. And there's a team that has been going to all the trainings.
Yeah, well, I know from the NSPAC meetings, attending those, one of them, they were saying that they were excited at this time having our district the way it is because pretty much the whole team could attend because you were only limited, like, two people per district. But because we got two for Northborough, two for Southborough, two for region, it was basically like their whole team that got to, like, go and attend some of the stuff. So, I was like, see, pays to regionalize.
And do all, does every single district in the state get grant funding for this purpose?
Yes, you did have to apply for it, but I believe, I think it was an entitlement. It was an entitlement grant. You just had to fill out the form, basically. Yeah, which, you know, it's no.
I mean, hey, it takes time.
Well, it's just the changing platforms and things.
Thank you for your team who filled it out. Do we have a motion, Lauren?
I move to approve the IDEA Part B Federal Targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars eight hundred, sorry, eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Motioned by Lauren, seconded by Kristen. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. No old business at this time. And we were on to the superintendent report, enrollments.
Sure. So, in your packet is the enrollment report as of twelve fifteen twenty twenty-three, so last year's report. We've seen, um, uh, seven students fewer than the December report. And we are looking at the, the full day K. We had five students less than prior month. So, we are looking into what that trend is.
You mean, they left? They started and then left?
Yeah, so we had, so our kindergarten, our kindergarten enrollment in Northborough, we had a hundred and forty-four students in just, um,
September.
In December and then in the December report and then in January, we have a hundred and thirty-nine. So, we're looking to what, what the, why. But really, other than that, there are no significant variances in, in enrollment. And we are monitoring enrollment closely for the, um, class size and for FY twenty-five.
Hopefully, January is a busy enrollment.
Yes. Usually, we see
Well, I've already had.
August. And then January is another wave of enrollments or, or unenrollments.
I've had, um, speaking of kindergarten enrollment for next year, you know, I've already had some of my preschool families being, like, asking questions and stuff about it. So.
Kindergarten registration did open?
Opens, yeah.
Uh, I believe Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel like they were filling out questions on Monday, too. I feel like, I don't know. Yeah. They gotta jumpstart.
And then also in your report is the FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report.
So, with the new year, it does mean that we are halfway through fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which is unbelievable to me. As of the end of December, we did have one hundred and fifty thousand seventy-five dollars or point five four percent of the budget rating. That is down almost eighty-eight thousand dollars from November. We are closely looking at all of the line items and going through and making some adjustments. I will tell the committee that as of yesterday, we did freeze the Northborough budget. And so, we are closely monitoring that. But I do feel that much of the expenses that we anticipate for the year have already been encumbered. So, I'm not concerned about the budget. We're also waiting for further information on the FY twenty-three supplemental budget. We have a webinar next Wednesday where we will be able to receive additional funds towards the fourteen percent special education tuition costs that we saw for FY twenty-four. And we also anticipate being eligible for extraordinary relief for the circuit breaker program. So, we do know that there are additional monies that will be coming to the district. It's just a matter of what the amount that we will receive and when we will receive them.
Do you have a question on that?
Yep.
If teachers have already planned field trips, is that already part of the budget? So, if they're taking their classes somewhere, that wouldn't be affected?
Typically, the field trips have already been encumbered where they are putting in information. Sorry, I felt like a tickle in my throat. We also rely on the PTOs, too. They're a generous supporter of our field trips. So, everything that has been planned has, is all accounted for.
Can you make a motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the Northborough Public School District FY twenty twenty-four Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, as presented tonight until audited.
Motioned by Lauren, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
So, also in your packet is FY twenty-five budget priorities and the FY twenty-five budget calendar, which we will review in our budget presentation.
Okay, committee member reports. Joan, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Bryce?
Nothing tonight.
Kristen?
The Wellness Committee didn't complete. NSPAC has a event on the twenty-fifth about the new IEP. Actually, it's a webinar for parents who can jump on and register for, which I did.
Yeah.
It's my plan, I'm intending. But I think it's all just information on the new IEP for parents. Yeah, no, nobody else met in December either since I saw everybody.
Lauren, anything?
There's just an interesting webinar this Friday through MASC. It's, I don't know, Becky, it's about, it's like the end of ESSR or something like that. Oh, you're signed up. I may be in attendance as well. I just thought it was intriguing. So, if anyone's interested, Becky and I will be there.
This Friday?
This Friday.
Yeah, I saw the email come in, but I, I didn't click it yet. So. NSPAC, as Kristen just teased, they have Basic Rights Understanding the IEP. It's a presentation by the Federation of Children with Special Needs and that's at six thirty PM. And you can register on their events page, on their webpage. And then also, I wanted to say, just because our next meeting is the day after, so I won't be able to say it. But Tuesday, February sixth, there's a workshop for the anxiety of relationship of learning development disabilities and how to implement the IEP. And that is presented by the NESCA. And you can register on the website also. And I usually am driving home and I remember about three other things I should have said, but I didn't. So, I'll end it there and move on. Education policy, none at this time. Policy development, distribution, none at this time. Personnel items, distribution of personnel report. And my only thing about the, um, adding of the ESP role is we need people to work it. I mean, we can have the money for it, but, because we still have positions open. It's just, it's so unfortunate. I don't know where the people are these days, but
I think we are.
We're great district, come work for us.
I think the labor market is, is rebounding a bit. So, I think we're seeing more and more people apply for positions. So, hopefully, next year will be a different year.
Yeah. Are there any questions? Does anybody have any questions about anything? Oh, for the retirements in January, will we invite them to the June meeting or May?
Yes, so we'll, so typically what happens is that we receive notification of retirements. Some, many of the retirees don't want the information shared until
End of school year.
May, June. So, we'll honor, honor the retirees at the June meeting.
Okay.
And it probably won't, many of the retirees probably won't be on any of the personnel reports until May or June.
Okay. I was just thinking of the ones who left in December and January and, well, they'll be invited, yeah. Communications, one. Actions on Minutes. We have the open meeting minutes of December sixth, the special open meeting minutes of December eighteenth, and the executive session meetings to accept and retain or release. What do we?
Retain.
We can retain them.
All right, I'll move to approve the open meeting minutes of December sixth, twenty twenty-three. Approve the special open meeting minutes of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and approve and release the executive.
No, retain.
Sorry. Approve and retain the executive session minutes of December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motioned by Lauren, uh, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Future agenda items, circuit breaker audit letter, ELA presentation, review presentation cycles, PTO presentations. I think we have, is it Malacan going first or? And then the presentation cycle for?
I'll review, you and I will review. And then FY twenty-five recommended budget. Recommended, recommended.
Recommended, recommended budget. Anybody else have anything? Yep.
I think it would be great to maybe ask the Chair, Kelly, to reach out to, to remember the person we appointed. I forget if it was Appropriations or Finance.
Yes, Scott.
Yeah, it'd be great to reach out to him, Stockman, right? And make a connection and invite him to our February meeting since we'll be voting on the budget.
Here, just add it to my plate, Lauren. No problem.
Here if you need me.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. That's a great idea. Love it. I'll get right on that. Um, the other thing that, and I mentioned it at our combined meeting, but I'm going to mention it here at our individual meeting again, is that I'd love to have, and I don't know if they want to do it at the combined meeting, but the cable TV and kind of decide, I know we've kind of thought about it and then, you know, changed it. But even after last, was it last month or two months ago, when we were here, you know, the people in the back that showed up, they were like, we couldn't hear anything. So, maybe we need to re-figure out if this is the best building. I know we've kind of talked offline about potentially going to the hyper, going to different things, but that adds in a whole different thing. But maybe one of our other four buildings in Northborough might be better suited for the school committee meetings. Off the top of my head, I think Lincoln Street School, just because it was, you know, renovated and whatever. But I don't know if, if a, if a place was made for that. It also then, with the Peaslee School, potential renovation, that brings up my, well, maybe this is something that we would want to put into that rebuild. You know, maybe we make some sort of a room that could host meetings and hosting. So, then that way, we have like the top-notch thing, you know, might be things to think about, too, for it. But I would love to have the Northborough cable.
I think if, um, if you would like you, uh, you and I can meet with Dana.
Yeah.
Talk about.
Yeah.
And then present back to the.
Yeah, that's great.
I think he has some ideas around, you know, again, I think the vision is not to have to come to a meeting and set up. It'd be nice to go to a place where everything's set up. It's
Turn on the switch.
High quality.
Don't have to run and look for cables.
Yes.
Where we're going live. Yeah. Did somebody beep? Joan, did you beep?
Hopefully, not someone here.
Now, speaking of that point, you may want to reach out to Keith Logue, former school community member, because Keith had looked at the possibility, this whole issue came up before by two, three years ago. And Keith had gone to even Lincoln Street School to see about logistics and the audio. So, maybe check with him to see what he found out what he did in his little was a.
Sounds good. Uh, next meeting month, I know Lauren's going to be virtual. Joan, you're going to be virtual also? February?
I'm sure right now.
Okay. You guys are good.
Good probability.
In person?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the plan anyways.
Okay, sounds good.
So, we'll do a hybrid.
We'll do a hybrid. All right, sounds good. Payrolls, bills going, audience sharing. Anybody?
There was somebody here.
There was. There was.
So, if that person didn't get to speak and you're listening, then email us at.
Anybody is welcome to email us at NSC and I'm not going anywhere near the end of that one. Wow, he's good. He's got it. He's got it down. I can't do that. I can read it and still not, and still mess up the letters. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Kristen moved, uh, seconded by Bryce. Roll call vote, Joan?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen? Lauren?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. We are adjourned at nine oh one.